This is Southampton Town Supervisor Jay Schneiderman calling to order this work session of the Southampton Town Board on this 10th day of September 2020. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public where we should stand, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. All right, to you, Sunday, if you could call a roll.
Certainly Supervisor Schneiderman.
You're.
Councilwoman Loftstad.
Here.
Councilwoman Martel.
Here.
Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Sciboni.
Here.
All right, we're all here. So we're going to have a pretty brief, open meeting, then we'll go into an executive session. And why don't we just start with a few updates? And I guess the first thing is to remind everybody that today is September 10th, which makes tomorrow September 11th, which is a day that none of us can forget. We all should take some time out tomorrow to remember all the lives lost. I know it's a particularly meaningful and important day for, sorry, I got my phone buzzing here. For people, including Jim Burke, our town attorney, who lost his brother on that day. So let's keep in mind all the brave first responders and certainly all the people who were in those buildings who perished on that day. And it really changed the world, September 11th, in so many ways. It really rocked our sense of self-confidence and security and plunged us into a new era of uncertainty. And you know, here we are now, I don't know how many years later from, was this, what, 2001, Jim? Is that when that was?
Yeah, this is the 19th year right now, so yeah.
Unbelievable. I'm sure it's like yesterday, so.
Yes, very much so, yeah.
And did we find out, I know you're going to be reading names somewhere. Are there online events, do you know, Jim, or anybody?
Yeah, I'm going to be down with the Tunnels of Tower Organization tomorrow. Reading names down at Park Ride also at the World Trade Center area. It's the first time I've done it since the first year we did it with my daughters when they were little, so it'll be a nice experience for me. I'm trying to support the Tunnels of Tower Organization, which stepped up to have their live reading of the names this year. I believe there was, so there was a memorial service at Oyster Bay last night down at the town of Oyster Bay Beaches in the ocean. There is various ones, it's Point Lookout, I'm sure all throughout Suffolk County there will be different memorial services. I'm sure Tommy John is aware of a number of them with the various fire districts usually have memorial services in the local villages and towns.
Tommy John, I know you mentioned something about the firehouses ringing bells or something.
Yeah, tomorrow, the 19th anniversary of September 11th in Southampton Town, the Fire Chiefs Council of Southampton Town has organized that the local fire departments will be sounding their alarms at six times throughout the morning to commemorate the times when the towers were hit, when the towers were collapsed, when the Pentagon was hit, and of course, the crash of Flight 93 over Pennsylvania. So when you hear that tomorrow, or whenever you're watching this, that's what it is, or was. So this is dated, this can be dated, but yeah, you know, the Stephen Siller Memorial Fund has really been a fantastic commemoration to the people who lost their lives on 9/11. Stephen Siller himself, this is the Tunnel to Tower Run, he parked his truck, got his turnout gear and ran to the towers. He was just getting off his shift as a firefighter, so that's quite a story.
Playing, he was going to play golf with his brothers and then when he heard about the attack, drove back. By the time he got there, the tunnel was closed, as the councilman mentions, he grabbed his gear and ran through the tunnel and then went up to South Tower and was killed in the collapse of the South Tower. So his brother Frank and his family stepped up and did the, started the run through the tunnel to commemorate his actions that day. Now they have, started out the first year, I think we had a couple hundred people and now we have 30,000 people who run through that tunnel every year.
Oh my god.
Raised millions of dollars to build smart homes for severely wounded soldiers. These guys, it's kind of, it's a club you don't want to be a part of, you know, they lose, these are soldiers who have lost usually both their legs, use of their arms, but it's just incredible human beings who've sacrificed all and, but are still most inspirational people you'd ever want to meet.
A lot of fires do that run in their turnout gear.
Yes, you're right.
So is there a run this year or no?
And my brother and I started the tower climb up the new towers and I met with Pat Foyle, a number of you know, and I asked Pat if we could use the building when it was completed and he said yes, and then I kind of looked at my brother and said, what do we do now? So I met with Frank Siller and I said, listen Frank, I have the use of the building. And Frank said, you know, Jim, that's fantastic. If you want to raise money for what we do, you have my whole organization. And I said, well Frank, you're raising money for severely wounded soldiers who took the torch from the firemen and policemen that day and did what they had to do. And so I said, there's no better organization I'd rather be involved in. So we, you know, we've raised again millions of dollars to build these homes for these severely wounded soldiers all throughout the country.
That's incredible, Jim. And you started that organization with your brother?
I started it, yeah, my brother and I were once who got the climb. You know, Frank and his family had been doing the run through the tunnel for about 10 years at that time. And then I met with Pat Foyle about a year or so before the tower, the new tower was completed. And he graciously said, yes, once it's completed, you can use this building for your tower climb. So then I joined up with Frank and Frank Siller and we've had, been five years of the tower climb now, we've raised millions of dollars. It's become the premier stair climb event in the world. People come from all over the world to participate. And you know, yeah, it's really, it's become a very special event, yeah. You start early in the morning, it starts off, the first flight goes off about 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, and you get to the top of the tower before sunrise and then everybody's up there and you know, many of them, you can watch the sunrise over Manhattan as, after you've finished the climb.
And then you're paid to be in it, right? How much does it cost?
Yeah, you raise money, right, you raise, you try to raise at least a couple hundred dollars to be in it and many people raise much more than that. And like I said, we actually, and it's limited because of the, you know, having been able to climb up a tower is a lot limited as how many people you can have in a, running through a tunnel. So we're limited for safety reasons to about 1,000 participants, but 1,000 participants, we raise almost the same amount of money as the 30,000 runners through the tunnel. So it's, yeah, it's been great.
I'd like next year to be part of that, to sign up.
Yeah, sure, yeah, it was supposed to happen this year in June, it was supposed to be June 2nd, so it's been put off now till, right now, hopefully till November, so this November. We climb, it's about 2,400 steps, it's about 100 flights and the stairs goes 12 and then 12 for each floor, so.
I know, it's a challenge, so I'd like to do it next year and get a whole bunch of sponsors.
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great, a lot of people have, very generous.
If I make it to the top, they all have to pay, right?
Yeah, 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 people are very willing to do it, you know, they see what, you know, this is about and like Councilman Sciboni mentioned, it's about raising money for our soldiers.
That's great.
It's, yeah, it's, there's no better thing you can do. And then they, you also raise money to pay off the mortgage of first responders who were killed in action, so you know, what else would you rather do?
Yeah, and you know, I'm not sure everybody who's watching this knows about your brother Billy, and do you want to, you want to say a word about who your brother was?
What's that?
Do you want to say a word to anyone watching about your brother?
Oh, well, yeah, I just actually just saw a story on Facebook, you know, something else pops up every day, but you know, just a little bit of the story, he led his men in to the North Tower, you know, he was down there after the South Tower, both towers were hit. And he got up to the 27th floor and he actually witnessed the South Tower collapse and his men were a couple floors below and he ordered them down and they were reluctant to go, but thankfully they did and they just got out of the building. And then as he was walking down the hall, he ran into a gentleman, Ed Bailey, who was a college of police, and his office mate, Abe Zemelwitz, who would not leave him, you know. And there was another group of firemen there and the lieutenant, who I spoke to years later, who said, we didn't know what to do with this man, he's a college of police, how we were going to get him down. Your brother said, I'm taking charge, you go. And he goes, you know, I wasn't arguing with them. He took his men and he just got out, they just got out of the building, so. My brother's five men and this lieutenant and his five men got out, they just got out. I was thinking, well, maybe if they all worked together, they could have got everybody out. Seconds, if there was any seconds delay, my brother's men and these guys from Edge of 24 all would have been killed, so they all survived. And Billy tried to go with Ed and Abe down to the 21st floor where he knew there was a working elevator. And they got to the 21st floor, but then they ran out of time. But to this day, you know, I've got at least those 10 people that are, you know, on earth and a lot of times I see their families and their children that were born after 9/11. I look at these families and say, what's Billy's actions, these families wouldn't exist, you know, these kids wouldn't exist, so it's, you know, it's heartwarming, it's an honor, you know. My brother was also a lifeguard at Rob Moses, but I always say that he did a lot of good things, but his last hour was his finest, you know, so it's quite an honor.
Well, thank you for sharing that. Let's just do a moment of silence together in honor of your brother and all those who perished that day. Thank you, everyone. All right, so let's do some other updates. Last night Tommy and John and I were both part of the first meeting of the Community Law Enforcement Review Committee. I think it was a good first meeting, we sort of did a go around, we got to meet everybody, actually Jim Burke was part of that too. And you know, everybody sort of shared a little bit of their perspective on what they hoped the committee would accomplish. Chief Skrenicki did a presentation in terms of where we are currently today, what the department looks like, how many staff there are, what are the different units and functions of the police department. I sort of did an overview on what the governor is requesting of us. And Christine Scolera talked a little bit about the timeline for that. You know, our next meeting, we were going to meet once a month, I think we're going to have to meet twice a month to try to get through the, you know, initially the governor executive order wasn't that specific, he later followed it up with like a 100-page specific guidelines for this committee, pretty thick report. So I think if we're going to accomplish everything in it, we're going to have to meet more than once a month, so we're going to try to meet twice a month. The next meeting, we're going to focus sort of on transparency and accountability and communicating with the public. Meeting after that, I'm not sure, but we're going to take on the issue of body cameras, we're going to take on use of force policies and things like that, there's a lot we're going to cover in this committee. And we have great participants from, you know, Bernardo Perez, from Ola, we have a representative from the NAACP, we have a number of clergy leaders, including Reverend Tisha Williams from Bridgehampton Church. So it's going to be a great committee. I have, you know, it's sort of aspirational, they clearly want our police department to be the best it could, not only the best it could be, but the best, like the best police department in the country concerning these types of issues of, you know, human dignity and non-bias, addressing bias in policing. So you know, we're, we're going to do the best we can to make sure that, you know, it's a community-based police department. I think the chief did a great job yesterday in presenting, I think it's going to be a good committee, it's not going to be easy, you know, we're really, I encouraged everyone to speak their mind, to not be afraid to say what they think is wrong, that we weren't going to be critical, we weren't going to, you know, we wanted, we wanted to hear an objective account or an objective perspective on how we're doing. So we weren't just looking for people to tell us we're doing a good job, we want to actually hear how we can get better. So I think it was good, Tommy John, did you want to say anything?
You covered most of it quite well, Jay, it's, you know, having this self-reflection for our policing in Southampton Town is wholly appropriate, really for anything we do, but that's, as I see this, to create the best police force on Long Island and in New York State. And indeed, we are ahead of the curve. We're doing this before Suffolk County, we're doing this before the other East End police departments, and we're not chying away from anything. So we look forward to a robust conversation and as I said, this self-reflection. And it's going to be, I believe, an important tool for our police and for our community to understand what our police, what they do on a daily basis and the professionals that we do have. And you know, like I said, we're going to take a hard look at each other. Some issues were brought up immediately and, you know, I look forward to having those conversations and doing what we can do to be the best police force for the people of town of Southampton. We have unique challenges here from, as we all know, you know, from our demographics and our geography and the fact that our population swells and decreases, so our police force and our other first responders are challenged in many ways and very often, they meet those challenges. So it's a good committee and we're going to do some good work.
So in other business, we've been running a housing survey on our town website. I think we're going to extend it, it was originally going to run through September 15th, we're going to push it to September 30th. We have over 2,200 respondents, but we're trying to keep going and get even more. Takes about five minutes to fill out. You can get to it through the town's webpage, so I think there is a, there's a link on the town's webpage.
There's also links on social media, Jay, on several pages and people can, you know, it just gives them access to the, back to the town website to fill out the survey.
Oh, good, okay. So on the town's website, I guess you might have to wait and watch it scroll through, just look for the housing survey. Is, I think that's the best way to get to it, but if somebody's having problems finding it, they can certainly contact my office and we'll help direct them to it. All right, let's see if I have any other notes here. There is a ribbon cutting this Saturday at 3:30 PM for the long wharf, the work that was done in Sag Harbor in the village. It's beautiful if you haven't seen it.
It's gorgeous.
It's gorgeous, it's going to be a low-key though thing because of COVID, so you know, with social distancing, obviously we can't have more than 50 people gathered, so I have, you know, been asked to come and say a word or two, but you know, I'm sure as elected officials, all of you are welcome to join us there. It's, you know, it's not our project, this was a village project. I was peripherally involved because the long wharf belonged to the county and the county really wasn't taking good care of it and was able, when I was a legislator, to get the county to agree to give it to the Village of Sag Harbor and they are.
A dollar, right?
What was that?
Or a dollar.
Yeah, or a dollar, so of course it's a lot more than a dollar because they took on the capital costs, which were extraordinary because, you know, the bulkhead, bulkhead ing all needed to be redone and there was a lot of costs and the county's fiscal situation was not, they kept just pushing it off and pushing it off. And Brian Gilby was the mayor at that time and, you know, he wasn't happy with the condition of the long wharf and certainly didn't want, you know, to see it decay. And so we offered them the opportunity to own it and they took it, they took it. And their, the village has really proved to be good stewards, good stewards, they've invested a lot into that long wharf and if you go out there and see it, it's like a new, it's a whole new wharf. They really have created a beautiful walkway, it's a much safer walkway, there's a railing now, you can't fall into the water. It's a, it's a great experience for anybody visiting downtown Sag Harbor and it will, ultimately will tie in to Steinbeck Park, so you'll be.
And it has already, Jay, you know, the outdoor activity in Sag Harbor with COVID-19, with the takeout, a lot of people are going to the outdoor venues to have their meals and sit and enjoy the waterfront. And the opening of the wharf is just really, really commensurate, you know, that, and it's been, it's been really great. Steinbeck Park and the windmill and the waterfront makes for a nice promenade, you can actually track underneath the bridge as well, there's a walkway under there and a lot of people have been taking advantage of that. So everybody, if you could come, it's kind of a fun fact, the long wharf in Sag Harbor is the dividing line between East Hampton Town and Southampton Town, so perhaps we could stand on our side and the East Hampton folks can stand on their side. So Division Street, that line runs right through Bay Street Theater and out onto the long wharf, out into Shelter Island Sound, so half of the wharf is on our side, so it's kind of fun.
Yeah, and you know, I believe they've finished the renovations now too to the Sag Harbor Cinema. You know, there may be a private ribbon cutting or something, you know, because of COVID and because movie theaters, theaters are not open yet, it's complicated obviously, but that is something we were very involved in, in providing significant levels of funding to make that happen. You know, in a post-COVID world, I'm sure that's going to be a very popular facility and it can't come quick enough in my mind, you know, but you know, hopefully we'll have a vaccine soon and you know, life will return to some new normal. All right, any other updates that people have?
I would just like to ask folks once again, and I know I speak for the board when I say, please fill out the census. New York State, we spend $26.6 billion more in taxes to the federal government than we receive in services and all of those calculations are based on the census. One of the reasons why this is so important is because we only take the census every 10 years. So the results that we get this year will stick with us in the rest of the country for the next 10 years. So if you are having children or you plan on getting senior services or a whole variety of services that are provided by the, by the federal, state, county government, those calculations are very often determined by census numbers. So please, 2020USCensus.gov.
Thank you, Tommy John.
So if I could, Jay, I just want to update everybody on the Great East End Cleanup, which was supposed to take place back in April. We finally have a date for it, it's October 3rd and 4th. You can sign up on our website, you know, SouthamptonTownNY.gov. Obviously we have some guidelines, we don't need big, big crowds, we're asking for small groups to clean up our beaches, your neighborhood, your neighborhood park, anything you see fit. So if you need any more info, just visit our website or find it on Facebook and Instagram.
That's great, thank you. Anybody else? You know, I'm looking, you know, I can give you a little bit from yesterday's COVID report from the county, you know, 55 new cases, so this would be, really this is going back to September 9th, yesterday's numbers, 1.8% of those tested in Suffolk County tested positive. Now we have seen that number below 1, so that's a little bit more, that's just a percentage of those who came in thinking they might have coronavirus or getting checked for whatever reason. So almost 2 out of 100 are, who are coming in for the tests or testing positive. There was 55 new cases, that's pretty, for the county, that's been what it's been running, about 50 cases a day. There were no fatalities in the county yesterday and currently 33 individuals hospitalized. That was actually an increase of four from the day before, but you know, we've been in that, in the 30s for a while. So it's been, it's been relatively steady. I haven't, you know, I've been following the tracker, but they just sort of changed their website, so I haven't found the link to the map that they put out where I can actually see Southampton's numbers, but I've been, you know, following Southampton's numbers pretty closely and, you know, it, though, the coronavirus is still here, it's, there are people in our community who are still testing positive, typically a few a day, you know, it has spread out, you know, different areas, could be West Hampton, could be Flanders, could be Hampton Bays, could be East Quad, could be Southampton Village. You know, we continue to have, you know, on average, a few a day. So there is certainly no time to let our guards down, it's still very much here. You do need that mask, you do need to social distance, you need, you know, to avoid crowds, certainly extra caution when you're indoors with people. We know this is an airborne contagion, so you know, when we see the numbers go down, I think there's a tendency to, you know, feel this false sense of safety and we should. This is a really, a very, very serious illness with a scary mortality rate and long-lasting effects for some of the individuals who don't die from it, but contracted and end up with respiratory problems that are long-term. This is, you know, we see, we see kids and young people who think that this is not a threat to them, it absolutely is. Not only can they spread it, but you know, we have certainly seen fatalities among children and teenagers and, and long-lasting health impacts, so you know, we all want this to be over as fast as possible. And we've, you know, it's unimaginable to me that the town of Southampton has been in a state of emergency since March. It's unbelievable, I'm still signing emergency order extensions. I never could have imagined an emergency that would go on for six months, seven months, or you know, even, even a month, even a month. Yet we are still under several local executive orders, we're still under federal and state and county emergency orders. It's, it's, it's mind-boggling, but you know, everybody's doing their part, everybody's working really hard. Ryan's office, you know, in Public Safety, in the police department, all of our ambulances and fire, you know, all of our first responders, our dispatchers, everybody, you know, is doing their job to keep people safe. And it's been complicated, human resources in the town, you know, they've had so much to do to come up with work from home policies and Plexiglas. work-from-home policies and Plexiglas protectors and temperature scans. It's, it's been really endless, Parks Department, Municipal Works, Highway, everybody has had to change everything, everything about their operations to keep people safe. And I think everybody will be relieved when we get past this, nobody will ever forget it. It's, the amount of people who have perished is staggering. I think we're over 190,000 in the US now, 190,000 people. I think, you know, that's more than died in Iraq, Afghanistan and Vietnam combined, maybe even Korea thrown in. So it's a, it's a staggering number of people who haven't made it through this pandemic and you know, it'll, it'll be nice to be on the other side. And we as a town, I mean, we have, we have been hit hard too with the fatalities within the township and even, even a town employee in, in the justice court who died of coronavirus. So it's been, it's been a tough period, but we will get through it. Any, any other updates before we go to executive session? All right, so for executive session, we have acquisitions with, with Lisa Combrink, you know, CPF potential acquisitions. There's some confidential legal advice, including litigation that we need to discuss. And I think that's it. So I'd like to make a motion to end our work session. We'll go into executive session on those items, we'll do that via a private telephone number with passcode protection, all right? So you all have been provided that information. So I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Scavoni, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll, we'll see you in executive session.